Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:30, and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We have announcements for all of our upcoming meetings. Regular council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, October 21st, 6:30 PM. And then we have the next council meeting is going to be on a Monday. All our meetings are held on Tuesdays, except for November 3rd, and that meeting is on a Monday because of Election Day, and we're not allowed to hold meetings during a public election. We have work sessions scheduled for Tuesday, October 14th, and Tuesday, October 28th. All meetings begin at 6:30 PM. Also want to remind everyone that we are in the midst of our budget meetings, and everyone is invited to join us. On Tuesday, October 28th, we have our department budget presentations, and then we have a work session on the budget on Monday, November 10th, and another work session on the budget Tuesday, November 25th, and then we adopt the budget and the levy on December 2nd, Tuesday, November 2nd. Again, all at 6:30 PM. We have one proclamation this evening, and it's fire prevention. And it is Fire Prevention Week, whereas the city of Burnsville is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Burnsville. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, whereas home fires killed more than 2,300 people in the United States in 2012, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And fire departments in the United States responded to more than 365,000 home fires. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, whereas three out of five home fire deaths result from the fires in properties without working smoke alarms. In one-fifth of all homes with smoke alarms, none were working. And when smoke alarms should have operated but did not do so, it was usually because batteries were missing, disconnected, or dead. Whereas Burnsville's residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of their home. And whereas Burnsville residents should install smoke alarms and alert devices that meet the needs of people who are deaf or hard of hearing, Burnsville residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. Whereas Burnsville's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fire and home fire injuries through prevention and protection and education, Burnsville's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. Whereas the 2014 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Working Smoke Alarms Save Lives." Test yours every month, effectively serves to remind us that we need working smoke alarms to give us the time to get out safely. Now therefore, I, Elizabeth Kautz, Mayor of the City of Burnsville, on behalf of the City Council do hereby proclaim the week of October 5th through the 11th, 2014, to be Fire Prevention Week, proclaim this seventh day of October, 2014. And I've often heard our fire chief say that a good time to make sure that you have working smoke alarms is this week. Change your batteries once a year, every week, and this has been the mantra from our fire chief. And we have an open house for our fire department on Thursday, October 9th, from 5:30 to 8:00 PM, and everyone is invited to come. You'll learn a great deal. It's always a lot of fun. The next item on the agenda is Citizens' Comments. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the council on an item that is not on the printed agenda and not in application form to come before us at a future date. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? Anyone? Seen no one? I will then move on. The next one is for emergency items only, and this is additions to the final agenda. Is there anyone who has an emergency item that they wish to add to the agenda? Ms. Johnston?
None from staff, Madam Mayor.
Members of the council? No? Okay. Thank you. And now we move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item will be removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item on the consent agenda to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Yes, please.
4P.
Anyone else? Ms. Johnston?
None from staff, Madam Mayor.
Members of the council? May I have a motion for the balance, please?
Second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Keeley, second by Councilmember Conlon. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Mr. Conlon, please come to the podium. And Mr. Conlon has asked 4P to be removed, and this was a continued item from the last City Council meeting, and this is the assessment appeal for the Arbor Vista property and property located at 14901 Viewcrest Lane. Mr. Conlon?
Thank you.
Mr. Conlon?
Yes.
Mayor and council, if I could interject just for a moment before Mr. Conlon speaks. He asked-
This is Mr. Joel Jamnik, our city attorney. Mr. Jamnik?
Mr. Conlon provided to the city a letter today. We distributed, we were unable to transmit it electronically because it did not come into the city server, but we do have a copy available for members here to review during his spoken comments, and there are copies available for the public if they want to get them at the back of the room. So I just wanted you to have that noted, and we will accept it into the record.
Okay. And the clerk has the letter. Very well. Mr. Conlon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, apologize that my email didn't reach you. I'm sure there's a bad attorney joke in there somewhere going into spam. Again, my name is Mick Conlon. I'm the attorney representing Arbor Vista Manufactured Home Community located at 14750 West Burnsville Parkway. I'm here again tonight following the postponement of the original assessment hearing in September, which was for over $21,000 in costs incurred by the city for the inspection and reinspection of various home sites rented by residents within the Arbor Vista Manufactured Home Community. The reinspections were necessitated by items like peeling paint, replacement of garbage cans, and required repairs, replacement and removal of accessory sheds owned by my client's tenants. Since our first meeting in September, we believe we've made, continue to make significant progress, both in gaining compliance from residents as well as payment of charges owed by residents to the city. Arbor Vista has continued to keep pressure on this issue and has issued final warning notices to residents via my office indicating that they can either pay the amounts that are due and owing to the city, as well as take corrective action in instances of noncompliance, or face unfortunately eviction under Minnesota Statute 327(c)(09). That threat of eviction still remains the community's only tool in this fight. It's a tool that they're understandably reluctant to use. And while we believe that we're gaining additional compliance with the city requirements every day, my client believes that more time is needed in order to persuade residents that the only option available is to comply with Burnsville City Code, by repairing those accessory structures, removing articles of rubbish, or doing whatever else is necessary to ensure that the city's code is fully enforced. However, more time is needed for that process to continue, to avoid having to utilize the eviction process in the community. Unfortunately, we believe that if the city moves ahead tonight with an assessment of Arbor Vista, that three things will ultimately occur. First, residents will lose their incentive to take action, as the threat of additional fines or costs imposed by the city of Burnsville directly on the residents will have been removed, and therefore, compliance will be disincentivized. A second, Arbor Vista will be forced to take legal action against residents who have failed to comply to this point, both to recoup the costs that have been assessed against Arbor Vista and to gain compliance. Obviously, the residents of Arbor Vista, majority being low-income residents of the city of Burnsville, will face additional legal fees that will be associated with the fending in those eviction actions. Third, for reasons stated in the written comments which have been provided to the council, Arbor Vista will initiate an appeal to the district court seeking to stop the assessment. So stated in our previous hearing, as well as the written comments, we believe that the proper pathway would be for the city to recoup those costs from the individual manufactured homeowners themselves, personal property taxes. We'd ask for additional time here tonight to gain further compliance and to continue to persuade residents to pay the amounts owed directly to the city, as well as to permit the council and the city attorney additional time to review the options stated in the written comments that were provided tonight, which specifically lay out several different paths that the city could take to recoup those costs directly from the residents. So those are all my comments. I'd stand for any questions.
Mr. Conlon? Everything that you have said, you said before, and we've seen all of the background materials, and you're trying to make the city be the heavy when the business transaction is between you and your tenants. Correct?
Actually, Your Honor, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Unfortunately, I think it's backwards in your scenario. The city has requirements that tenants abide by and take care of their accessory structures.
They lease the ground from you.
They do, but they own the structures themselves, which have been the issue of contention.
Yes. Well, as I read all of the background information that our staff has given, and you do have an appeal process, you have to go through the court system, I don't see that anything else changes, except you're wanting us to give you more time to pressure the residents to pay the fees.
That's correct, and we believe that that process is working. We've, after speaking with Mr. Forslund today from your code enforcement division, it sounds like we are making progress with both the payment of the fees and additional compliance. There are some low-hanging fruit that we believe we can address with the residents, such as trash screening, items that should not be as hard as they appear to be. But again, the tool that we have available is the eviction process, which, given, you know, what we're dealing with here, which are important items that need to be taken care of, but the only tool that we have available is the eviction process.
Mr. Jamnik?
Mayor and council, as you know, the assessment this evening is an implementation or administrative action based on a policy and a set of ordinance provisions that the council has adopted. We are merely executing the existing policy, implementing the existing policy that the council has established. City staff and I have had an opportunity much longer than the council to review the written submittals, and our recommendation of the council has not changed, and our recommendation is the same as we made in the council packet.
Okay. Members of, Councilmember Conlon?
I just want to say, Mr. Conlon, before I vote, that I have read this in its entirety, and thank you also for making your, keeping your comments brief.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Okay. Madam Mayor?
Ms. Faulkner?
If I can, I just would like to add, the applicant will have 30 days to pay before this gets forwarded to the county, so there's still 30 days to collect payment from those tenants. I just wanted everyone to know that.
Thank you. That's good information. Mr. Conlon, you have 30 days for your tenants to comply with all of the fees. So you do have 30 days there, so there's no reason to extend it any further, at least from my point of view. Councilmember Keeley?
Sorry, I didn't hit the button.
Yeah?
For the benefit of everyone watching, our benefit, could we have staff go through a quick review summary of the timeline that led us to this point? Because I don't want anyone to perceive that we just began taking this up a month ago or a couple of meetings ago, that this is a culmination of a long period of time, and I understand the applicant is asking for more time, and I understand, reading your documentation, that there, there's a difference of opinion on routes that we should take. But ultimately, this didn't just start last month, I have a feeling. And I'd like to know before I vote what the background is again.
And if we also recall, we have three mobile home parks in our community, and only one is before us. And if you remember, Councilmember Sherry reminded, Mr. Conlon, that we do have a model just across the street from them. So, Mr. Forslund, would you like to just go through a brief history? Because we're privy to that history, but our citizens who are watching are not.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'm just going to briefly summarize our processes, our contacts that we've had with the Arbor Vista Lake Shore community of question on here. As you all are aware, we started our proactive property maintenance program in January 2013. At that point, what we did was break the city down into 36 different sections to cover it within that three-year period. And Arbor Vista's scheduled program was beginning in the spring. We started the proactive programs, the inspections of the manufactured home park in May 2013. Right after that, we met with several different, well, one of the park managers, and explained to them what our process was, what our procedures were, and what we were trying to do, so that they're aware that we are enforcing the code in that area. We also met during that timeframe with the various tenants, if they had questions, to explain alternative solutions so they could gain compliance. We stayed in frequent contact with the park manager and the tenants as we moved forward. Basically, we felt that this initial phase was more of an educational process, so they knew what our expectations were and what we could do to help them as well. We also met with several of their managers, the regional managers, as well, because they were interested in what our process was, and they had been receiving our compliance letters at that point, wondering what they exactly were, which we explained to them. At this point in the process, around August of 2013, and it's in the background as we go through this, we did meet with all the residents here in this very room and explain to them, if they had any questions, what they could do to gain compliance, as well as the park manager at that time. At that point, I felt that maybe we had some cooperative efforts going with the park managers, with the tenants, and with city staff. I thought we were going to really be going places at that point. We continued throughout the fall/winter of 2013, giving notices, trying to get the tenants into compliance, and that seems, may seem like an extended period for those who may not be familiar with the parks, but we're looking at over 325 units, I believe, out there with various issues. And again, we had a process here that gave them, you know, we wanted to work with them first, we wanted to work with the park management, and we wanted to work with the tenants to gain compliance. So it's very intensive time investment by staff to make this a goal of this. And during that timeframe, and I've got these listed also in the backgrounds, is we seem to have gone through a period where we had at least four more park managers. There was rapid turnover there, which made it-
One year.
-very difficult for staff to be able to communicate effectively. It was like we had to start over each time with explaining to the managers what we needed to do. I know it was very frustrating to our inspector in the area as well. And we offered again, well, come down to City Hall, we'll meet with you, we'll talk about the process. It's actually was a fairly straightforward process, we felt. Let's see what else we've got here. Started up the summer this year, and on several of these places, we had given extensions. We had worked with people who may have not have had some financial resources. We worked with some folks that, you know, we gave them some alternatives. We felt we had to, you know, start stepping it up. We weren't, we were getting behind, and we started just sending a few people, you know, third inspections and reinspection fees and citations. At this point, we really wanted to get the park management involved, obviously. And I need to point this out, because I think it's very important, is at this time, we have not received any contact from the corporate office. And that was telling for me, because we made a lot of requests for that, you know, are you communicating back? We need your support. We need you to be a team player. That hadn't occurred at that point. On August 28th, we did a step further, and unlike any other city I'm aware of right now, we even offered an open house for anybody, anybody who had a special assessment to come in, talk about it, maybe we could resolve it. We didn't have anybody from Lake Shore show up to discuss that, and I guess that was a little bit frustrating too. Maybe we could have solved some of this prior to coming here. Also, I think what, to me, when I looked through this process, where I wish we would have had a little more involvement was up front.
From Lake Shore.
From the very start, when we started this process, I wish we could have had a team player. We didn't have that. We didn't get a call or contact from the corporate office till two weeks before our first hearing here, which to me was frustrating. It was frustrating, and I didn't bring them here, but I've got 64 return receipt cards for notices we sent to the corporate office that got signed for. And, you know, I can, you know, we did our best on this one. I have to say that I'm encouraged, and I guess in the last month, with the efforts that Lake Shore has made, and I'm sure with the help of Mr. Conlon, of getting some of our reinspection fees repaid and recovering some of our costs. Compliance has increased too. We're getting, making some headway there. But at this point in time, just to let you know, we're at $16,850 due as of just a few hours ago, and 59 properties are noncompliant yet. So we've made headway. And I guess that's just a brief summary of how our staff interaction has been with Lake Shore.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Conlon? When were you hired?
I was hired by Lake Shore a year ago, and the first I heard of this was roughly about 45 days ago. And that was the first time, unfortunately, corporate also learned of it, and you met Mr. Karsh here last meeting.
Interesting, but they received a lot of notices.
Right. I'm not sure what the disconnect was. And obviously, you know, as Mr. Karsh said when he was here, they adamantly apologized for that. And, you know, they want to work with the city to fix these problems, and they're asking for more time to do that.
You have 30 days. Members of the council, any other thoughts? Thank you, Mr. Conlon.
Thank you.
With that-
Move to approve.
If you have no comments, questions, a vote is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Keeley makes the motion to approve, second by Councilmember Conlon. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, nay. And, Mr. Conlon, you have 30 days to get it all done.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to item number five. Item number five is on our regular agenda. This is a public hearing, and Ms. Deb Garros, our city planner, is presenting. This is Rose Bluff's application for abbreviated subdivision for preliminary and final plat of a six slots, single-family subdivision, to be known as Rose Bluff 2nd Edition, located west of St. James Lutheran Church, 3650 Williams Drive. Ms. Garros?
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize. I'm having a little difficulty here. Give me this. Yep. Nope. There we go. All right. Thank you. Sorry for the technical difficulties. Totally my fault.
Always great. Our city clerk is very proficient.
Yes, thank you very much. Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is a public hearing that's needed. This is an application for an abbreviated subdivision. The process is the same as a standard preliminary and final plat review, with the exception that the planning commission is not required to hold a public hearing, so it shortens the process a little bit. And it's for those applications that are fairly simple and replats up to a maximum of six lots. The subject site is, consists primarily of the St. James Lutheran Church property, and then property to the west in the Rose Bluff neighborhood. If council will recall, the planned unit development for this 48-lot subdivision was approved earlier this year in June. At that time, council approved a PUD and plat, and with that PUD, we did indicate that the applicant had been in negotiations with the church to purchase some additional property, and allowed, if that sale did come through, that they could come in and make application for another plat to basically extend their lot lines on five of the lots. So that is why we are here this evening. The site is shown, again, primarily, St. James Church is a little over five acres. The entire site is about seven acres, and really what's happening here is just the west 35 feet of the church lot is being sold to the developer so that they can extend those lots on the east side of Rose Bluff Boulevard, an additional 35 feet. On the overhead, this is showing the proposed final plat. You can see that Lot 1 Block 1 is the church property. This is a good situation, because the church property has never been platted before, so we will be obtaining the drainage and utility easements and rights of way that we need through this plat over the church's property. Church has been very good at working with the developer and with the city on this entire project, so we're very fortunate and very appreciative of that. With the lots, as I indicated, there are five lots that are basically a replat of what we had before, except that they will be extended further to the east by 35 feet. There are a couple of things that I just wanted to note for council. The area in yellow is a drainage and utility easement, and that will be the subject of your next public hearing that would need to be vacated. And again, those were, that's where the rear lot used to be, and then they will be extended back, so we'll just be getting rid of that easement that's not necessary. The area in green is the trail easement. There will be a trail connection to Kramer Nature Preserve down south, and then part of the larger greenway system. So the trail actually was dedicated, or excuse me, provided in an easement. Now it will be dedicated on the plat. And then in addition, St. James Church has provided additional trail easement along the south side of the church property for a future trail or sidewalk at some point in the future. With that, the plat is consistent with the city zoning ordinance, with the PUD, and with the comprehensive plan. Staff is recommending approval, subject to four conditions, and that's that the residential lots, the five residential lots, will still be subject to the planned unit development zoning. Number two, that the final plat would need to be approved, subject to the vacation of those drainage and utility easements that I just referenced. Three, all development fees will need to be paid prior to issuance of permits. In this- With that, the plat is consistent with the city zoning ordinance, with the PUD, and with the comprehensive plan. Staff is recommending approval, subject to four conditions, and that's that the residential lots, the five residential lots, will still be subject to the planned unit development zoning. Number two, that the final plat would need to be approved, subject to the vacation of those drainage and utility easements that I just referenced. Three, all development fees will need to be paid prior to issuance of permits. In this case, for Rose Bluff LLC, they're paying the amount based on that 35 additional feet, so that's a little over $3,000. For the St. James Church property, staff is recommending that those be deferred. They are not, they're not doing anything with the property now. This plat is totally to help the developer in making that exchange. So staff is recommending that that assessment, or excuse me, sewer assessment be deferred until some point in the future, and the church is aware of this, and they are agreeable to this. And number four is a standard condition that will need written documentation from the county when the plat is recorded, before we'll be able to issue permits. And with that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Questions for Ms. Garros? Thank you, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I will now open a public hearing. Is there anyone to speak to this item? Anyone to speak to this item? Seeing no one, I will then close the public hearing. Members of the council, your pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Wynn makes the motion, second by Councilmember Keeley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, and the motion carries. Thank you. The next item is a public hearing, and this is a resolution to vacate the drainage and utility easement associated with the Rose Bluff Second Edition development that we just heard about, and presenting is our Director of Public Works, Mr. Steve Albrecht. Mr. Albrecht.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is the partner item to the previous approval, and what we're asking you to do tonight is to vacate the drainage easements that were platted with the first edition for lots 23, 24, and 25, as shown in the exhibit, that yellow area that we talked about earlier, and then as the new plat will grant the necessary drainage and utility easements that we need in the future. And so with that, this is a public hearing. I would recommend the council open the public hearing, take any comment, close the public hearing, and then act on the resolution before you. And I stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albrecht. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Kind of housekeeping. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone to speak to this item? Anyone to speak to this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Members of the council.
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Keeley makes the motion, second by Councilmember Wynn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, and the motion carries. The next item, item number seven, is also a public hearing, and this is a resolution to revoke the liquor license for Ninja Enterprise LLC doing business as Thunder Valley Bar and Grill. Mr. Chris Forsland, our licensing and code enforcement coordinator, is presenting. Mr. Forsland.
Madam Mayor, council members, before us tonight, we have a resolution revoking the liquor license for Ninja Enterprises LLC doing business as Thunder Valley Bar and Grill. This resolution is based on the fact that we've had several violations of state and local ordinance, and I'm just going to briefly go through some of those. Failure to maintain liquor liability insurance as required by Minnesota statute, and local ordinance, failure to pay the second half liquor license fees of approx, of $3,750, selling of alcohol while license is in suspension, and the city suspended the license on September 5th of this year, and failure to maintain a valid Minnesota Department of Health food establishment license. As part of their ability to sell intoxicating liquors, they need to carry a food license, and that has been invalid since January 1st to present time. The, for remaining on the liquor posting list from the Department of Revenue for delinquencies, for tax, tax delinquencies, and return check fees, which we have not yet recovered. At this time, staff's recommending that their liquor license be revoked per your discretion. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Forsland. Any questions for Mr. Forsland? Councilmember Keeley.
What's the applicant's remedy options if we revoke it?
Mr. Jamnik.
Madam Mayor and council, upon compliance with the city ordinance, an application could be submitted for our review for a new license, as long as the compliance is made, but they would not have a current license, they would have to apply for a new license and comply with the ordinance's conditions.
And all
And that would come back...
Insurance have to pay, all of the other fees need to be paid.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone to speak to this item? Anyone to speak to this item? Seeing no one, I will now close the public hearing. Members of the council, Councilmember Keeley.
I was just wondering if there was anyone here to speak on behalf of the applicant.
As I look out into the audience, there is no one to speak on behalf of the applicant, and the applicant is not present.
Well.
Well. Mr. Jamnik.
Mayor and council, the notice of the hearing had been provided both by mail and personal service.
Thank you.
Okay. We have done everything. Councilmember Coughlin.
Motion to approve revocation.
Councilmember Coughlin makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wynn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, and the motion carries. Thank you very much. And members of the council, there are no other items to come before us this evening, and a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Councilmember Keeley makes the motion. Second by Councilmember Coughlin. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. We stand adjourned. Good night, and thank you for being with us.